So, welcome to the January 26th meeting of the Provo City Planning Commission. We are expecting a couple more commissioners to join us, but we have sufficient for our quorum at the moment. So, we will start with the Chair's Statement about the Open and Public Meetings Act. Due to Utah County's high level of coronavirus cases as determined by the state's COVID-19 transmission index, I have determined that conducting meetings with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present there. Therefore, for the next 30 days, all meetings of the Planning Commission will be conducted via electronic means. Okay, we have six items on the agenda, but we're going to skip item one and come back to that at a time when all of the commissioners are here. And we will then move to the petitioners. There are five items there. Three of them are legislative, marked with asterisks, and they have, those items will, we will make a recommendation and the municipal council will make the final decision. The non-start items are administrative and the Planning Commission makes those decisions. We will start then with the roll call. Please state your name and whether or not you have any conflicts of interest. Commissioner Anderson.
Dave Anderson, no conflicts.
Okay, Commissioner Gonzalez. See here, yeah. Okay, you're kind of row body. We did not hear all of that. I don't know if you want to disconnect and come back.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, that's better.
Dana Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Henry.
Ryan Henry, no conflicts.
Commissioner Jensen.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Commissioner Jones.
Ally Jones, no conflicts.
And Commissioner Miller.
Commissioner Miller, no conflicts.
And I am Laurie Urkiaga. I also have no conflicts. With that, we will move to item number two on our agenda, which is that Andy Jones requests concept plan approval for a four lot subdivision in a proposed R18 one-family residential zone located at approximately 669 South 1600 West. Item three is also part of that. Andy Jones requests a zone map amendment from the A 1.1 agricultural zone to the R 1.8 one-family residential zone in order to create four new residential building lots located at approximately 669 South 1600 West. That's, those are both in the Sunset neighborhood and Mr. Ardmore has the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm just going to quickly go through the slides here to argue with the proposal. So, here's the property, two half-acre lots just south of Sunset Elementary. 600 South here, 1600 West here, here's the lots. Currently vacant and in the agricultural zone. As you can see from the map, it's mostly agricultural around the property except for there's some R110 across the street. The proposal, I'll also show you the future land use map of the general plan as this for residential. The proposal itself is a four lot subdivision using a central access for all four of the lots. And zoom into it here. So, that access setup was done to comply with the collector road status and restricted access of driveways on that 1600 West as it's described as a collector road. So, the applicant has complied with that. He has been through the coordinator review committee on this project and has received a positive response from that. Steph has reviewed this. It meets the general plan standards for as far as density goes and as far as land use go. And we are recommending approval. I'm available for any questions.
Okay, really quick. What is the orientation of the two lots that are essentially flag lots? Are they facing the the shared driveway or the street? How do those work?
Flag lots, they will actually have that choice. Lots one and two will have to face the front of the home towards 1600 West. Lots three and four will have the choice of what they want their front yard, side yard, rear yard to be.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioners, it's time for our questions of staff. Commissioner Jensen.
I just had a question maybe for Mr. Day, maybe for Mr. Ardmore. How is, how much do we need to take into account planning for the future? Because I'm worried about those lots to the east that are really long and deep. How do, what's the plan for streets to access those? If somebody wants to develop those, well, not if, but when somebody wants to do something with those, how do we make sure that we don't lock off all access on this block because we've just done a driveway off of 1600?
I can try to address that. Part of this process is showing a kind of a facility plan to point to the things that you're asking about. The applicant did that with, I believe, a road network coming through this area here, if you could see my cursor. And then up, if you're familiar with the Century Homes subdivision down to the south, there's a north-south road down there. And they took that same kind of location and carried that up through here to kind of connect a grid style patterned street network. None of that's on the property they control, but that's how they kind of conceptually assume that those properties could develop.
Excellent. So, there's already a plan that won't leave those inaccessible from 600 South.
Right, that's the goal.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
I actually have a, this is Andy, the applicant. I can show that on my screen too, if you guys would like to see that.
We'll have you share that when it is your turn to comment.
Okay, thanks.
Which will be right after staff. So, other Commissioner comments? Questions of staff? All right, Andy, we'll invite you to comment now and do you have the ability to share your screen?
Sorry, Chair, we actually don't have the applicant share the screens during the Zoom.
Okay.
Well, I apologize. I apologize for offering that then.
Okay.
So, I mean, I don't have much, too much to add. Just like Aaron has been saying, we went through with the staff and made sure that we were in compliance with everything the city wants. I met with the neighborhood and everybody's on board and the plan seems to be in everyone's favor. We plan on building some really beautiful homes here, about 4,500 square feet that'll add a lot of value and character to the neighborhood. So, we see it as all positives all around and and we're meeting all the things that the city would like to see happen in that area. So, seems like a pretty straightforward proposal from our end. Happy to answer any additional questions or concerns right now though, if you guys have any for me.
Okay, Commissioners? No questions of the applicant? Commissioner Jensen, you were waiting.
The one thing I wondered was, as I looked at the ownership on the properties to the north and south, it looks like they're owned by the same family. Is there a reason that they're not being with the one on the corner? Am I wrong? That's the same owner?
So, that was actually purchased like a week before we went under contract on these two parcels. I was wanting to purchase it, but it was too late.
And the one below that says ISM Family Revocable Trust, is that also yours or no?
No, a family member came in and purchased that from the trust.
Okay, I just was worried that those would be something that would come into it later and we would need to figure out how to make it all one cohesive development, but it sounds like that's not going to be a plan.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions from Commissioners? All right, doesn't look like we do. Do we have any public commenters? If so, I'd like to invite the neighborhood chair if he or she is present.
Hey, we do have some people attending. I'm just seeing if they are wanting to make comment. Press star nine to let us know if you would like to make a comment. Okay, I will give it about 30 seconds for that lag time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any hands up, so we don't have any public comment at this time.
Thank you. We will close the public comment portion of this hearing then for these items. Commissioners, do we have any additional discussion on this item? It does seem to me like it fits within the plan. The zone would be appropriate for the area. So, it does seem rather straightforward from my perspective. Driveways a little bit different, but seems like it would work if traffic engineers think that that is acceptable. Anything else from Commissioners?
Sorry, I do have one question. Commissioner Miller.
Okay.
Sorry, should I raise my hand first? I don't know how to do that.
No, go ahead. There's a button down below or there are three buttons over on your name, I think, where you can say raise hand. Maybe not.
Okay.
Somewhere there's a place where you can raise your hand.
Yeah, I see it. So, I do have one question, sorry, just real quick for the applicant about the the driveways. So, on those back lots, that would be a shared driveway?
Yes, that's a shared driveway.
Okay.
Final design as per staff will be, will happen during the final subdivision application after these approvals.
Okay, gotcha. I was just curious to know if you planned on putting like the the garages on those front units in the front of the building or also like the side access? So, it'd be like a shared driveway with four or just the two?
Yeah, yeah, gotcha, gotcha. So, for lots one and two, plan, obviously, the front of the house has to, the front edge needs to be facing west towards 1600.
Right.
It's going to be more of a side load garage on those. And then three and four are going to be more traditional as far as like what you see with a lot of houses just in the front. Because we're planning on having those just face inward.
Gotcha, gotcha. But the two front houses, the garage will be on the side and so most of the street frontage will be like the front of the house itself and not the garage?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, great. That sounds great. Got it. Those are my only questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions from Commissioners? Comments? If there's no further discussion, it might be time to entertain a motion. Commissioner Jensen.
I guess I have to be the talker here. I feel like this meets all the requirements and the objectives of the general plan and the Southwest plan. So, I'm ready to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that we approve this four lot subdivision in this proposed R18 zone located at 669 South 1600 West in the Sunset neighborhood.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Ally was first.
Okay.
Jump in next time, Miles. All right, and let me call roll. Oh, is there any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Anderson.
Sorry, did you not hear that? I?
No, I didn't hear it.
Sorry. I, yes.
Okay, you were voting yes on the motion.
Precisely, thanks.
Okay. And Commissioner Gonzalez?
I.
All right, Commissioner Henry?
I.
Commissioner Jensen?
I.
Commissioner Jones?
I.
Commissioner Miller?
I.
And I also vote I. So, item two is approved as a concept plan approval. For item three, we would be moving to recommend an action to the Planning Commission. Do we want to have any discussion on the zoning proposal? We could entertain a motion on that as well. Commissioner Henry?
I'll make a motion on this one. I guess for discussion, it didn't, it didn't affect this proposal, but just the applicant's statement made me think that there are still some misconceptions about development, but we won't get into that today because it doesn't affect the project. So, I motion that we recommend approval on item three. Andy Jones requests a zone map amendment from the A 1.1 agricultural zone to the R 1.8 one-family residential zone in order to create a four new residential building lots located at approximately 669 South 1600 West Sunset neighborhood.
Thank you. And our second?
I second the motion, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing nothing. We'll move to the vote. Commissioner Anderson?
I.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
I.
Commissioner Henry?
I.
Commissioner Jensen?
I.
Commissioner Jones?
I.
Commissioner Miller?
I.
And I also vote I. So, those two items were approved unanimously with item three being a recommendation to the municipal council. All right, items four and five are also paired. Item four, Tim Mettler requests concept plan approval for a 62-unit apartment complex in a proposed campus mixed-use zone located from 46 West to 90 West, 800 North in the North Park neighborhood. And item number five, Tim Mettler requests a zone change from the residential conservation RC zone to the campus mixed-use CMU zone located from 46 West to 90 West, 800 North to allow for a 62-unit apartment complex. This is an item that we have heard before, but it's coming back with a few tweaks. So, Mr. Ardmore again has the staff presentation.
Thank you, Commissioners. So, just a quick history. First time we saw this one was back in May of last year. At that time, we needed to see a concept plan that made room for the A future expansion of 800 North. So, they worked on that, changed the plan a little bit and brought it back in November of 2021. If you recall in that hearing, there was some question over the zoning, whether it is the best zone for the property, whether it should apply to all five properties, including the Foxwood Apartments or just the four properties along 800 North. So, Steph had a chance to meet with the applicant and the architect on this project after that meeting. We went through some different options, some alternative zones. And in the end, the best option was to move forward with the initial zone change request, but with the change of showing a future phase on that fifth property, the Foxwood Apartments. So, let me run through that real quick. So, here's our zoning map. Again, it's in the RC zone currently. The general plan calls for residential. And here's a site plan of kind of overlay on top of the map so you can kind of see in relation to the other apartments around how that would look scale-wise. Let us jump into here. So, you can see the difference from the last time we saw this in November is this phase two up here. And I think that kind of gets the, some of the questions that the Plan Commission had last time on creating a zone change for all of the properties and not just the four along the 800 North. So, they've shown a future 40 apartment phase two. Not too much of the presentation or staff report, as you have read, is on that phase two because they are just moving forward with the phase one right now. They would just like to move forward with that part. And in that first phase, not a lot has changed since the first time. Let me show you those floor plans. So, they addressed some of the parking issues with their parking dimensions on the last one. There was some concern. They worked those out. Provided additional bike storage here on the first parking level. And they have their egress elevator and stair egress on that level. Again, it's access from 100 West with no access off 800 North because of the status of that road and the adjacency to University Ave and things like that. Moving up to level two is where we have additional parking, but then the units start. These are the ground floor units and also the amenity space. You can see here that they've kind of programmed in a little bit more than what you saw last time. Pickleball court, basketball, picnic area, barbecue pit. And you can see how that kind of flows into the future phase two courtyard to kind of complement each other and make a kind of a masked recreation, open space for both the projects. Moving up through the building, these units essentially are the same as you saw last time. And then on the top level is an exercise room. So, all that's pretty much the same as last time. We have some elevations here. If you wanted to see those as far as the concept plan goes. And then we also have the TDM because they are requesting a reduction of 13 stalls with this project where code would require 96 and asking for approval of 83. Uh, so again, staffs reviewed this. We feel that this is a positive, uh, plan for this property, for this part of the neighborhood. Uh, we're comfortable with the zone change throughout all of these properties, uh, with the phased, um, projections of, of the two different projects. And, and we're comfortable with the parking reduction. Um, thirteen stalls isn't a lot, and we believe with the, the programmatic details that they provided in their TDM uh, analysis and proposal, uh, that that is going to be sufficient for the project. Uh, so we are recommending approval again of the concept plan and the zone change.
Now, uh, Mr. Ardmore, we're only asked to recommend a zone change on the phase one lots at this time. Is that correct?
That's not correct. No, they, the, the request is for
The entire.
Yeah, the one point three.
Okay, um, thank you for that clarification. Commissioners, do we have questions for staff? Commissioner Jensen.
So I have a couple of questions for Mr. Ardmore. Um, last time, one of the things that caught us in our tracks was that the CMU zone says that if the development is less than, um, about an acre, um, they have to have no more than forty units per acre. So because they're now labeling this phase one and phase two, does that mean that the standards of fourteen point fourteen E point oh four oh parentheses two don't apply?
That's correct, because they have the one point three nine acres for their development. It's, it's over that standard, so then there's no longer a density, uh, maximum there.
Okay, um, even though they're not all combined as one lot, they're multiple lots, it still isn't a problem.
Correct, correct. Uh, their future subdivisions would, would take care of that.
So I still don't understand why CMU is better than LDR, MDR, or even HDR in this. I, I, would we also be okay if this proposal came to us right now and said, we want to have a donut shop in here and a a little parcel service and a nail salon and, because those things would be allowed in this CMU. So I'm just envisioning, if we're going to change the zoning, what if it really developed to the way we, that zoning could develop?
So that would complicate it. Uh, there'd be commercial parking standards, uh, for those uses, so there'd be additional space needed for parking. Uh, I understand that's not the desire of the applicants. They can confirm that. Uh, they just want to move forward with a residential project.
So wouldn't one of those dense, multiple family, um, zoning requirements work just as well, or do they have different setbacks that's making the project not doable? What is it that's keeping them from choosing one of those?
Yeah, we looked at all those. Uh, I actually, uh, went through, uh, that kind of spreadsheet and looking at each one of them and analyzing the numbers. Uh, they do each have particular regulations, uh, that would make it more difficult for them to develop, to develop the apartment buildings that they desire. And this was the best zone for them.
Because I love this project and the amenities, but I still, I'm still stuck on the fact that we've got the zone that's intended for one reason and, and I feel like we're under utilizing it with this plan. I also have concerns about the parking. Um, there, I like the idea of limiting the tenants with a, with an agreement. But, um, if there's visitor parking, maybe they would just like delineate what the visitor parking is, but I'm afraid that this might inadvertently push extra vehicles to park on the street because they may only be allowed to have one car in their unit, but that doesn't mean that they don't have another one that's parked around the block, which we've seen happen in other developments. So I love the idea in theory, but I don't know how it will play out and whether it will end up becoming a negative for the neighborhood. So those are just some questions that I wanted to bounce off of you because those are my concerns.
Can I address the, the campus mixed use comment? Um, if you looked on the zoning map, uh, we have a whole bunch of property that's zone campus mixed use through here, and this color goes all the way over to nine hundred east.
That are certainly not really mixed use by what we're envisioning.
So campus mixed use is, uh, essentially a residential, uh, high density residential zone that can allow a commercial component. Um, there's areas in the Duwaki neighborhood plan that we encourage those commercial components, but in no way is it regulated, um, to to force then any developer to provide commercial space.
Or is it? How do you, how do you plan for the future on that if, if the zone allows for those commercial components, but their parking, like right now, they're asking for a reduction, and if they were to change some use to add um, something commercial in there, they would never have enough parking for it. So how do you plan for that in these initial phases without making it impossible to add it in the future?
So this would have to go through a project plan after the zone changes approved. That project plan would show exactly what they're doing. If they change their plan from the concept to show commercial, they'd have to show through the project plan review how that would work.
I, I know that they probably would do what they've said, but I'm just thinking like ten years down the road, if somebody wants to add it, there's no way for them to add parking without a major overhaul, so that's just tough luck for them.
But it'd also be hard to convert these one bedroom units to, to commercial units. So I, I don't see that happening in this particular project, but I understand the concern. I just, I don't see that being a, a problem here.
Ms. Jensen, the safety valve for us is the business license. For any type of commercial business to go in, they have to apply for business license. If they don't, we would shut them down. When they apply to that business license, if they can't meet parking standards, the, the business license is denied. And, and just like you're saying, I don't see any way that commercial uses could meet the parking ratio on this property.
Okay, awesome. I just wanted to bounce those questions off of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Do we have any more, um, questions, um, for staff from the commission? Uh, Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, I think maybe initially my questions might be for Commissioner Jensen, just relative to the, the zone that's being discussed here. Are there design criteria for that zone, Lisa, for buildings or landscaping or anything like that at all?
Yes.
You know?
Yeah. I can answer that. They, they, sorry.
Or anybody that can answer that?
Yeah, there are, there are design standards attached to this CMU zone.
The existing apartments, they meet those design standards?
The existing Foxwood Apartments, most likely do, meet all of the design standards.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The existing Foxwood Apartments most likely would not meet all the design standards of the CMU zone.
I can't fathom then how they possibly could be included in this project unless they're being brought into conformity with the applicable standards at this time.
It's a phase development plan.
So that phase would occur now?
No, in the future.
They'd be allowed to continue to remain, I'm gathering perpetually without conforming to the standards, which makes me feel like this is simply a workaround.
It's, it'd be illegal to conforming, Mr. Anderson.
They would be nonconforming.
We have a lot of legally nonconforming situations in the city, and this would be another one.
And Provo City is a proponent of that, of creating more nonconforming uses.
I, I don't know if I'd agree to that, but we don't have a problem in this case.
Staff's recommending that that's what happens now as a workaround in my view of coming up with a proper zone for the project that's being proposed. I'd feel differently if the proposal involved all of the property included in the proposed legislative change, the zone change, to bring it all into conformity with the zone that's proposed. Um, but I appreciate you clarifying that that's not the case and that this would create a nonconforming use.
Not a nonconforming use. It would not create a nonconforming use.
It would create a use that does not conform to the standards that are in place for the zone. I would call that nonconforming.
It'd be a nonconforming building as to the design regulations, but the use is perfectly conforming.
Uh, thank you for splitting that hair. I appreciate that. I think that's all that I have.
Okay, additional comments or questions for staff? Alright, I would, oh, Commissioner Henry.
Yeah, coming back to the parking, uh, is staff aware of any other projects where permits actually do reduce parking? And are there precedents that that actually works?
I believe that TDM references some of those.
It does. Okay, because I'm, I'm stuck on that being that, yes, they have a policy in place, but we if people are going to lie, does that have to come into this? Because then we'd open a whole can of worms. But it just seems to me like, and, and, okay, so another question, uh, the other buildings around this area, do they have an overflow parking problem as it stands now?
Uh, not that I've heard of from, from the public, but that concern hasn't been brought to me. I don't, I don't live in this area, so I can't tell you for sure.
Okay, but we haven't looked into that, uh, because it seems like that would indicate what may happen here, given the amenities, given, there is a the UVX bus, but are people using that? Are they keeping two cars? Are they sticking to one car? I feel like a precedent from the others would help me feel more comfortable reducing parking. I feel like apartment parking is the one place I feel we are always underparked. So to reduce it has me concerned, but, uh, that's all I have for this, this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller.
Yeah, my question was in regards to a little bit on the design standards as well as far as the, like, street level, uh, units and what the city requires on those street levels as far as like access, because I've seen, you know, there's some apartment complexes where it's a blank wall with, yeah, maybe some windows, but nothing like as far as like interface between the public street and the private building. And so is there kind of any design standards in that zone that require that, or is it like they just have to have like one entry unit? Or one access to that whole property? That's more or less my question.
No, it's a good question. Thank you. Um, yes, uh, the CMU has, uh, an entry and window, uh, regulations, uh, for a street level, uh, one standard for primary streets, one standard for secondary streets. Um, at a concept plan level, we don't get into that detail, but once they submit for a project plan, they will have to provide a door every fifty feet, I believe, for a primary street, and there's a certain percentage of windows on the ground floor and upper stories, um, articulation, all those things come into play.
Gotcha. Okay, great. So I'm getting ahead of the process.
Hey, um, anything else from Commissioners to staff? Alright, we'll go ahead and invite the applicants to speak.
Can you operate the mouse, then?
I'm gonna have Aaron run the, the computer system here for me for, my name is Tim Mettler. Um, I've come before you before. I, I think that we probably did not lay out the vision for the project very well the last time. So just to kind of rehash, when we came, um, back, came here in May of twenty twenty one, we came up with a project, and I had a courtyard area, um, and at that time it was brought up about the widening of eight hundred north. And so consequently, we were asked to adjust the footprint of the building, which took off seventeen feet off the front of the building there to adjust for that and took out the courtyard area. One of the questions that came up in the last meeting was, well, what happened to the amenities? And we didn't have those doc, I mean, we had it in mind what we were doing, but we didn't have a document on the plan. So we went back and documented this on the plan. Um, and so in one of the first drives, can you go back one screen?
Yeah.
So this screen here, in the bottom left hand corner, there's a picture of a bike cage there. And so, uh, our intention on that bike area is to provide something, you know, we manage a lot of properties, and one of the concerns about the tenants is that if we park our bikes out in the open on just a bike rack, they're subject to getting stolen, you know, higher risk of getting stolen. And so what's intended on that screen there is a bike parking area, and it's not just a striped on the ground, here, park your bike here, um, type thing. We're looking at a bike cage. The people, that, that they can feel safe, that, you know, bringing their bikes to the property, they've got somewhere to lock them up. And hopefully, you know, frankly, most kids that are going to be attending this complex here probably are going to be BYU, Uvu type students. Um, we manage a building that's just two blocks away. It's a fifty one unit complex called College Park. Um, very similar, you know, type design, one bedroom, you know, living room, kitchen area. And, and we've been managing that for probably fifteen years and really understand the demographics there. We have bike cages over there, and a lot of kids, and bike cages are full, and a lot of people, you know, will bring their bikes and use those for transportation to and from the university or jobs that are nearby. As Aaron said, the, the complex that's, that's to the north of there, um, is referred to as Foxwood Apartments. Um, on that complex there, that complex was built in the early seventies. So we're sitting at fifty years of life on that complex. Um, while it's still structurally sound and everything's going well there, we're looking at the estimated remaining useful life um, coming to an end probably in the next ten to twenty years. Hence, we wanted to, we've had these properties within our family for years. Would like to continue to keep that in the family, and hence we wanted to, we had in mind a master plan for the, the property there, but didn't document it very well previously, and we tried to approve that. Top right corner, as Aaron mentioned, there's a pickleball court, combined basketball court that's planned there. That ties in nicely to the property just to the north there, um, that would be phase two. That's kind of a gathering area there. Um, then also on the plans here, um, in the, can they see your pointer or not?
Yeah.
So there's a clubhouse plan just down to the right. There's a clubhouse plan there. It's kind of a, you know, the units are smaller units. And if you said, hey, I want to invite people over for a birthday party, you know, unless it's a small birthday party, probably predicted, um, what they can do within the unit there. And so we've got a clubhouse area planned there or it'd make a nice gathering place for the community, um, for, you know, a birthday party or get together on a movie night or something like that. Um, right up above that, there's a picture of a fire pit. Um, would love to have a fire pit in that area, kind of a gathering place as well, near the pickleball court. Um, to the left of that are additional storage lockers there that are available for people to use. Um, hopefully, they'll be, you know, we plan on those where there could be additional rollover bike storage there or belongings that people have that, that don't fit quite in the unit very well, um, they can use those storage lockers. Red, have I forgot anything else on this screen? Um, continue to roll down a couple of screens. Um, as, as Aaron mentioned, on the one floor, we do have a fitness room. A couple of weeks ago, I was in California at a Marriott. They had a small, nice fitness room there in the top left corner. Um, really enjoyed the fitness room. They had a couple, uh, treadmills in there, a couple elliptical machines and some free weights. Um, serviced the property really well. So we've tried to address the concerns that, that people had about, one of the questions on the last meeting is, well, where did the amenities go? And my comment was that they were still planned on here, but frankly, we didn't have a document on the plan to kind of create that vision very well. As I mentioned, we managed the complex, it's two blocks over, called College Park. There's fifty one units there, primarily married couples in there. Um, we have a one to one parking ratio there, and we issued permits there. Um, we surveyed the tenants there, and I provided the survey results to, um, Legend Engineering, or the firm that did the TDM. Hales Engineering, and so they used that and did their own inquiries into the property there. We, we feel like, um, I mean, we've managed that property, as I said, for fifteen years, have a good idea on how to manage the parking. Um, along with, you know, the close proximity to BYU, the close proximity, um, to the bus stop for those that either go to BYU, Uvu, um, out to the warm area. Um, we just feel like, you know, this, the way that we've got the property designed, um, fits very well. We've been, tried to be conscientious about you know, the property use and house design and making sure that it, it fits well for the and making sure that it, it fits well for the neighborhood there. We do, you know, one of the questions you asked a minute ago is rollover parking. We manage the Foxwood condos that are just kitty-corner on the block, and we actually own those as a family. And there, we have one-to-one parking available at the Foxwood condos, plus another eight or 10 stalls for visitor parking. So anyway, we just, we would like to build this. The houses are rather dilapidated, and without significant improvements into those, we'd really like to just tear those down and put up something that we feel would be much more appealing in the neighborhood, in our opinion. So anyway, any other, does anybody have any questions I can answer?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Mettler. You mentioned the bike cages. I'm assuming that those are going to be assigned and with some sort of a key. Are you expecting those to be shared between units? Or?
No, well, not everybody's gonna have a bike, but I mean, basically, we would assign those out, yes. And they would have a locking system on there. The exact design, don't have yet, working with, talking with a welder to try to create something that is designed really well, looks good, and also is secure. Because I know probably for the tenants, probably the biggest concern they have, their bike not being in their apartment, is, is it secure outside of my apartment? So that, that's something that we want to keep in mind and address. And I, I don't think a very good vision was given last time, because, I mean, it could have been interpreted as just, well, here's our bike parking, and here's a bike rack, and they're left out in the open. And, you know, that, that's just problematic.
Okay, and then the amenity space, the clubhouse, that opens to the outside? It looks like. It sort of faces the pickleball court, so is that an external door then?
I'm, Brett Harris, who's the architect here, says yes, I'll let him help.
Yes, there would be an external door that could go, you know, you could either go out through the corridor and out through the entry, or you'd have a, a door that matches kind of what the, the apartments have to go out into that courtyard as well.
Okay, and then, um, it looks to me like the pickleball courts have grass around them. Is that, am I understanding that properly?
The green is really to just represent where we can have landscape. You know, as we get into the, the, the project plan approval, we'll have a, we'll, we'll hire a landscape architect, and he'll come in and enhance that space. It's more just to show, this is where there will be some, some landscape area to, to, to provide, so.
That was kind of frankly, the best picture of a pickleball court that I had in my mind as a vision of being kind of, you know, a combined pickleball court, basketball court, where you could take down the net and play basketball, or change it to pickleball, is kind of what I was thinking. And so I kind of like the representation. I'm not sure, you know, the landscape around it may not fit what exactly we do there.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, are there other questions for the applicant? I don't see any. All right. We will then open the public hearing portion of this. Rachel, do we have anyone who wants to comment? And if the neighborhood chair is here, that would be first.
We don't have anyone on right now, but let's give it 30 sec, 30 seconds, because there is that lag time if they are watching on YouTube or Facebook.
Okay.
Okay, I do not have any attendees, so there's no public comment at this time.
All right, we will close that portion of the hearing. Commissioners, Commissioner Jensen, I see that you have your hand up.
Yeah, maybe I should have asked the applicant this question, but maybe it's for Mr. Ardmore. What is the lot coverage with this current plan? Do you know?
I don't have that offhand, but I can get that for you, Ms. Jensen.
Okay. I just was asking, because I was looking up what was permissible one, and it says only 75% lot coverage is allowed. And I'm doing the math, and it's 73 units per acre right now. If that's with Phase Two added with an additional 40 units. That just seems like a, a huge increase from what's there. So I just want us to make sure we know, I'm not saying that's wrong. I just want to make sure we have the picture of the numbers in our head.
Right, yeah, I, I know I did take a look at that, and it met codes. As you could see from this, the, the buildings wouldn't take that percentage of the land, but.
So you think it's fine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Urquaga, just as I close the public comment, we did just get a call in. So we do have a hand up. Is that okay if that person makes a public comment?
Yes, we'll let them come in.
Okay, caller with the number ending 282, you can go ahead and make your comment.
I see them as muted.
Go ahead, caller 282.
Yes, hi, this is Terry at the Cottage's apartment. We have the condos that are east of the Mettler project. And again, the concerns that I have are the amount of parking. And I know it was addressed by way of, well, we'll issue permits. And I think that's great, but I, you know, I'm looking at the requirement, you know, if we have 64 marriage units, and each one of those college kids have cars and married, which a lot of them do, I mean, that's 128 cars. And the city wants 96, but, you know, they propose something different than that. And, you know, even with the city standards, they're short 14 stalls. And I'm just finding, you know, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, that parking is a problem around the complex, and it is for me also. And, you know, we have a higher ratio of parking than, you know, than what is proposed here. And it's just, it's, it's just parking's an issue. And I just, I think it's just a high density. And, and yes, they have an engineer, Hales Engineering, that say they can prove it out. But it's, you know, it's just an issue for us. And, and I just think in having a high density there with more cars, and then again, this dedication of eight some, someday, you know, it's just gonna be, you know, really, I think we need to look at a hard, take a hard look at the parking situation. That's all I have to say.
Just quick question, are you experiencing parking issues right now?
I'm completely full. Every parking stall is full. I could use another four or five. We, you know, we have 69 students, we have 54 stalls. And every one of them, and I could sell another five or six. And matter of fact, I'm getting people calling me every semester saying, hey, I would love to get, rent a parking stall from you. And, and they're offering me, you know, $70, $80 a month just to park their cars. Now BYU is telling kids, you can live anywhere you want. And so we're going to get a lot more people traveling into the area. And they're going to live in Orem and Springville, and, you know, for less rents. And they're going to drive, and I see this whole BYU housing where they've told the students, you can live anywhere you want now. I see it to even be worse parking situation. So my feelings, but, you know, it's, yeah, it's, it's still an issue.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your, um, your experience shared with us.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
Could I address the comment we just made?
Um, in a moment, I want to, is there anyone else who wants to comment, Rachel?
No, we don't have anyone else waiting to comment.
Okay, the hearing is really officially closed now. All right, Mr. Mettler, do you want to respond?
Yeah, Mr. Sherek brought this up before. And again, the complex that he's running is primarily by-the-bed, single-student housing. And he mentioned that he's got 69 students with 56 stalls. Our complex just to the north of him is the Foxwood condos. We have 100% parking plus another eight to 10 visitor stalls over there. So I think as far as people from our complex calling over there to say, you know, if you got additional stalls, that's not happening. Plus, I think we're comparing apples and oranges when you're talking about student housing versus married housing. And back to the traffic study that Hales Engineering did and our experience on the complex just down the road, we feel that the parking that we've got is plenty adequate on what we've got designed in there. I mean, if you look at the size of the units and really look at the demographics of who most likely will be renting this, these aren't families with multiple kids and multiple-vehicle type situation. It's mostly young college students trying to get through college that are either, you know, going to BYU or Uvu or working. And the majority of them can only afford one car. And so, and I think that's, if you take a hard look at the traffic study, I think that would bear that out, is that the traffic study and those that have also got the expertise and certified on this have, have done the study and have indicated this property does have adequate parking for the residents and the demographics that, that would be living there.
Okay, question on the guest parking. You, are you going to have designated guest parking within Phase One? Or would guests be expected to use the Foxwood parking?
Uh, we could do either or. I guess we haven't looked specifically at that, but could, could, you know, look at that as we continue to design this out.
Okay.
I mean, one consideration is to allow guests during the day, and then after a certain hour, not allow guests and allow any residents to park in those remaining stalls that are open if there are, you know, tenants that have second cars. But, you know, the majority of the stalls would just, tenants will be assigned a specific stall to park in.
Okay, Commissioners, do we have comments? Commissioner Henry?
Yeah, something I just noticed looking, I was trying to get an idea of the parking from looking at multiple different mapping software. And I just noticed the second house in has a parking lot that seems relatively full on all these maps. Who's parking in those stalls? Are those tenants of Foxwood? Or are those from the houses? What are those stalls used for?
Well, we have, we have some maintenance staff that use that parking lot. And then, because we own the four houses along there, each house has three tenants up and three tenants down. So there's a total of 24 tenants, and so the majority of that parking is taken up by tenants along that block. I mean, if you look at the other houses, they just have a driveway there.
Right, right. Okay, but those are not Foxwood overflow. Those are from those four homes.
Well, we kind of leave it open, but the majority, there are some specific stalls assigned to the one house that's there and the neighboring house. We do just leave the rest, I mean, all the property there is owned by Foxwood. And so we've used as parking, but the majority of that parking, it's not been specifically designated, but it's primarily tenants. We don't, we don't tell the tenants that are in the apartments that that's overflow parking, but we do tell the tenants that are in the houses that they can park there.
Okay. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you. Okay. Other questions, comments, discussion from Commissioners? Commissioner Henry?
Sorry, just had another thought to throw out there to the Commissioners for discussion. Given all the opportunities to use alternative transportation here, I'm struggling with the idea of if it's more annoying to park, those other opportunities become more enticing, and it would encourage more people to use public transport if the parking was difficult. I guess I'm just kind of thinking out loud, do the other Commissioners feel like being underparked, given the other opportunities to ride bikes and use public transport, that that would help encourage people to use the alternatives if parking was annoying? Maybe encourage a couple that moves in there with two cars to drop one car? I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud on that.
Okay, Commissioner Jensen?
I think it could go either way. I think, I think if there was a place where this transportation demand management allowance would go, I think, I think this is a good place for it, because unlike other places that have asked for it, this is actually in good proximity to, to the transportation and, and the, the main hub of activity for this demographic. But I also think that it could just push over into the streets, which we've seen happen. So I don't know which one to bank on.
Right.
Commissioner Jones?
I tend to agree with the idea that the more accessible public transit is and the less convenient parking is, it tends to push people more towards public transit. And I do know that that's a pretty common tactic by engineers who do this more often than I. So especially given how accessible the, the buses from that apartment complex, I don't think it's a terrible idea in this specific instance. And I also would add that it was brought up with BYU allowing people to live wherever they want, that we'd be increasing the car load. But I tend to think that it would do the opposite and allow people to disperse so their at-home car usage is a little bit more spread throughout the city and less concentrated. And like the Joaquin neighborhood and all kind of those common student areas. So especially south of campus, I think limiting parking isn't a terrible idea.
Yes, this is, um, basically three blocks from campus. So I do see a lot of people biking when I, you know, go through that area of town. Also see a lot of people walking. I lived a one block closer to campus and had very rarely used my vehicle, like. So I don't think, I think that it would tend to push people, and especially with the current awareness of public transit and the fact that UVX is still subsidized to the point that people are not paying for it. So I kind of think that it does feel appropriate for this particular area. Commissioner Jensen?
Um, I'm kind of, if, if you want to keep talking about transportation, I can hold my comments. But I kind of made a list of the things that I see are, that are worrisome, maybe unresolved in our minds, and then the, the things that we really like about this project. And I wondered if maybe just going through that would help us to get down to whether we want to recommend this to be approved or not.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, so the negatives I've listed, or the perceived iffy things, are that it has a reduced setback. So it's going to feel very close to the street. And I sort of feel like that's not something we can say, hey, you can't do this project because it's, it's the street widening that's going to make that happen. The reduced parking, we've talked about that a little bit. Unsure about where visitor parking will go. We're unsure about how that parking will play, whether it will work to our benefit or will regret it if we, if we approve that. I, it's a really high density. We're almost tripling, or two and a half times the density if, on Phase Two. And I think it's double, two and a half times the density on what's there. Didn't he say 24 in those houses? And that's going up to 62. So, um, so that's going to be more vehicles, more people in that space. That's, I'm not saying it's good or bad, that's just maybe. That's, I'm not saying it's good or bad, that's just maybe, um, something that's, that's making us pause. The positive things, it's a good location for this density. It's close to the transit. Um, there's decent amenities at the, at the proposed project. And in my opinion, this, a nice new project is more appealing than the rundown homes that are there. I, I don't believe there's any historic preservation issue that we would be overlooking by allowing redevelopment there. So those were just a few things, negatives and positives, maybe things that are making us cheer for the project, things that are making us worried about it, that we can talk about it and try and come to a decision.
Thank you. Comments? Commissioner Henry.
Yeah, I want to thank Commissioner Jensen for creating that list because I was about to do it and she hit everyone that I was looking at. Uh, as I look at this area, I tend to agree that it, if there's ever a place for this kind of project, this feels like it. It still feels a bit cramped to me. I mean, I see that there's a swimming pool there now that won't be there. That's the loss of a really good amenity that isn't coming back. Uh, as well as just to, to speak to, uh, Commissioner Anderson's concern about the second phase is not just a a, a, a way to get to the means to the end. I question that. I wonder about that. Uh, and now I forgot everything else. So parking, I, I am leaning towards the parking just because this is a place that gives other options. There are, there are options to walk. Uh, oh, I remember now. The, the last thing, uh, I wonder if that call, that campus mixed use needs to be relooked at because mixed use means mixed use, but an option for mixed use makes me wonder why it's a mixed use zone. And I almost feel like if it's going to be optional, there needs to be a good reason from the applicant. They, they need to defend why they're not providing, uh, that mix. Because having that mix, the, the more properties that have mixed use commercial, the more opportunities for people to walk, which is another alternative mode, but if there's no destination to walk to, we're not going to reduce the parking. And we're not going to get to that point where things are walkable, bikeable uh, for the people in the neighborhood. So it's just going to keep driving this car culture in areas that really have moved on from the automobile, except we're not allowing the destinations that kind of complete that. So I guess that's maybe a question for later. Uh, is, can we put a little more teeth in that requirement of commercial in a mixed use zone? Uh, I guess those are my thoughts.
Okay. Other comments? Are we ready for a motion? I will say that I drive past this area regularly and it is, it is clearly aging. And so I like the idea of having something new come in. Um, parking does not bother me so much. I do want to see amenities, um, guest parking, those kinds of things to be well thought out. Is anyone ready to make a motion or have a concern they want to express? Commissioner Jensen.
I'm still, I think I'm okay with some of these questions that we've been discussing. I'm still just really worried about the density, that it is an, a significant increase in the, from what the current use is. Much taller, um, footprint, if you can call it a tall footprint, much taller building, um, bigger footprint. I'm just wondering, um, Mr. Ardmore, in the areas to the east that you showed us on the map, what's the density of those? Like, how does this compare density-wise to, to what we see elsewhere? Is it significantly higher? Because it just feels so much significantly higher from the current use. So I, I don't want to make sure, I want to make sure we're not making a mistake.
Sure. And of, of course, it varies through, uh, the CMU. I mean, it goes along from Eighth North to Seventh North, from University to Ninth East. So there's a lot of different densities in there. Uh, we just got application for a project taking up all of this through here and out to one fifty east. Um, there's going to be a proposal for three hundred and something apartments there. Um, so this is the kind of density that this zone imagined. This is the, the zone that the council established just across the street here. Uh, imagining these kind of densities, I don't think it's out of proportion for the vision for the area, if you're asking my opinion. Um, but I, I don't have those numbers on, on the densities to the east.
Hey, Mr. Henry.
Yeah, my thoughts, uh, on the density, uh, Commissioner Jensen is the, if there, well, eight hundred north, there's talk that it's going to be widened. I definitely think this will encourage that widening because it will create more traffic. Uh, and if that's going to happen, which we've discussed quite a bit here, uh, the best place to have the, the greatest density is on your major roads. And University Avenue and Eighth North are the major roads in this area, especially going to campus, eight hundred north. Uh, it's kind of a major access to campus. So the density to me doesn't bother me as much. Yes, it may be one of the denser ones in the area, but I don't think excessively so. Uh, but if we're going to have greater density on your major roads is where you want that. So that to me, like over there on Fifty East, that seems strange to have excessive density back there, three hundred units. That's really going to change that parcel. And I know we're not discussing that one tonight, but I'm not as bothered by the density. I guess in, in a lot of ways, my thoughts on this are leaning towards approval, but just barely. If this was a set of scales, they're not tipped very far one way or the other. I'm kind of on the fence, but leaning towards approval, but it's a flop over the finish line. Uh, not a slam dunk in my mind. Uh, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Do we have other comments? Is anyone ready to make a motion? Commissioner Jensen.
I'm not ready to make a motion because I'm still, I'm with Commissioner Henry that the scales aren't tipping very far. I'm leaning towards it because it sort of makes sense. But I think I'm hung up on the same thing that Commissioner Anderson was hung up on, which is that this isn't really that different than what we looked at last month or in November. And I feel like it's just sort of been a twist of words that has suddenly brought it into compliance with the question. And I'm torn about whether that's okay or not. I think the project could be an improvement. I think it's a, it's a decent proposal. But I worry about doing it sloppily or setting a precedent that's not exactly what we envisioned with the, the use of the CMU zone or residential conservation zone or any of these other requirements that were overlooking. Anyway, I'm thinking out loud. I would love to hear what Mr. Anderson has to say again. I would love to hear what Ms. Jones has to say, or Mr. Gonzalez, and Miles, whose name I just forgot.
Miller.
I'd love to hear what they have to say about it because we've talked about this before.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Um, yeah, I'm just turning on my video, I think. Uh, you know, I share the same concerns like with, with the CMU. Um, feels like it's a hollow kind of designation without any commercial element. Um, and it feels a little, you know, to, to be a little bit more blunt, it just feels like an end around just to, you know, to make the project work. Um, you, you designated that, and then there's no commercial. And so then it calls into question like, you know, we have this mixed use zoning and projects don't have to use it or they don't, they don't meet the spirit of it. So there's some, some concerns with that. Um, in terms of like traffic management and, and parking, um, this is the place to have a, a TDR and, and a reduction because it's so close to the, the UVX line. Um, and so close to BYU campus. Um, you know, that being said, the, one of the projects that comes to my mind when I look at these things is, uh, over by UVU and Geneva Road, there's some large apartment complexes. And they're right next to the, there's a track station there, or not tracks, but a front runner station there. Um, and I have, I have friends that live, uh, in a subdivision, a, a single-family resident subdivision just north of these, um, apartment complexes and they're, um, for as much parking as they provide, um, you, you find students parking their cars in these residential neighborhoods. And then, uh, if you, you know, if you're to go over on a, a Friday or Saturday night, you'll see, uh, the north end of the, the front runner lot with about, um, probably about a hundred cars, primarily which are, were people, uh, visitors to the apartment complexes. Uh, you know, using that, that front runner parking. Um, so yeah, I'm always, I'm always concerned about, uh, apartment complexes being underparked and, and the people who really pay the price are the, the neighbors around it. Um, with the congestion. Um, you know, that being said, like the, the, the project is an improvement of the housing stock. Um, I, I don't have a problem with the density, um, and for where it's located. Um, is there anything that could? Is there anything that would preclude them from building up higher and providing more parking? Is, is, uh, or shaving off some units to, and, and go building higher to allow for more parking? I'd be curious, uh, if that's something, um, you know, if the Commissioners are interested in having this project move forward, that with that something we could, uh, encourage the developer to do.
It's an interesting idea. I'm actually thinking in terms of the mixed use. Um, I'd really like to see Phase Two be planned. Um, like almost scheduled as to happen. And I'm wondering if it would be possible to incorporate some commercial into Phase Two since that plan is not complete yet. And that would be something that I would recommend to the applicant. See if there's something that could help make that a little bit more of a desirable, walkable neighborhood. Commissioner Anderson.
Uh, thank you, Lori. I really don't have a lot more to add. I feel a little bit responsible to speak up. Um, but, uh, you know, like I said earlier, I have some very fundamental concerns with the idea, maybe to touch on what you were just mentioning there, that, um, the concerns with the idea that um, we don't have concrete plans for Phase Two that shows what that will be, how it conforms to the requirements and the zone that's being proposed for that site. Um, again, like you said, a schedule for construction, anything that would bind an applicant to move forward with that. Um, I really feel like, uh, um, there's a possibility, I'll just couch it that way, that this is less than a completely forthright, um, proposal that will result in that property simply conforming to the zoning provisions that, um, come into play. And I think like Commissioner Jensen said, I, I believe there are other zoning districts in Provo that are on the books that would at least allow for the density. And if a developer has to modify their plans to somehow conform to the provisions in those zones, then I think that's appropriate. Um, I'm going to be very hard pressed to support parking reductions, particularly, I would say, probably for a number of years. Um, the change of Provo, I'm sorry, the change of BYU allowing students, um, it, to a large degree to live wherever they want and the impact that that will have on parking in close proximity to campus, um, throughout the day and so forth. I, I don't know that anybody has any idea just about exactly how large that impact would be. Um, and, you know, yes, this site does have some proximity to transit and to, uh, BYU, but yet it's remote from a lot of other things that people rely on cars for. Um, uh, taking transit to go buy groceries from this site won't be any fun. Walking or riding a bike for that purpose from the site likewise won't be any fun. I think when residents of projects like this are able to have cars, they will, and they will find places to park them. And, um, I think it's the responsibility of a city to try to make sure that, um, you know, people are, are afforded that opportunity if that's what they choose, um, wherever they live. And, you know, that's, that's at least a little of my thought as to why I wouldn't support the parking reduction. Um, and yet I, I agree that with what I understand about this corridor is that eventually will run, uh, to the west, uh, in an expanded way. This is an appropriate site for more density, I think, than what's there now. But, uh, more often than not, I feel like, um, we're asked to consider proposals that are really, really pushing the envelope in every possible way. And, uh, I think personally, I'm, I'm fatigued with that. So that's, that's part of my reaction to this proposal as well.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Henry.
Yeah, along with Commissioner Anderson, uh, the idea that Phase Two is ten to twenty years out, to me, that's long-range planning and we're approving a zone for something that is ten to twenty years out. So much can change in ten to twenty years. But to me, it, it does feel like a workaround. Uh, I would be more inclined if this project included commercial. I, I, I guess the parking is, uh, to Commissioner Anderson's comment, uh, about reducing parking, if nothing changes, nothing changes. And so to reduce parking that makes it more annoying, that makes people consider the alternatives, uh, will start the change that we're looking for. But if we keep approving parking, uh, at the ratios today, people are going to continue to drive even when the alternatives are present. Uh, but then that to me is countered, the, the reduction in parking is countered by the fact there's no commercial, which would help reduce the need to, to drive. But then that to me is countered, the the reduction in parking is countered by the fact there's no commercial, which would help reduce the need to to drive. And also looking at Eighth North, if it does expand, it's going to turn into to quite a corridor for business. Uh, I know that's hard since those plans are still up in the air for an applicant to consider that. So I guess considering the applicant's proposal today, this one still just remains kind of on the fence for me. And and the biggest issue is that that campus mixed-use zone with a phase two that by the applicant's own admission is 10 to 20 years out. So uh I guess I'm still struggling. I'm still in the on the fence on what to do on this one. There are great reasons to approve it. There are questionable reasons why it shouldn't be approved. The the messages sending to others that if I just include other properties in my rezone, then I can get the density I want and kind of play with numbers that way. I I I have concerns about the message this would send. Obviously, nobody listens to these other than the applicants anyway. But just in case someone was, you know, are we going to set that precedent that we can do that? So that's my biggest holdup is that campus mixed-use zone. So I'll let another commissioner speak.
I have a question um for, oh, boy, I'm seeing it. Okay, temporary echo. Um, and probably for the applicant. Um. I know that we mentioned, you mentioned that there's probably between 10 and 20 years more life in the Foxwood apartment. Does that mean you're waiting until that period of time passes before you develop it? Or are there plans for a more immediate development of phase two?
So, I mean, the architect here, he could talk about specific ideas for that because he's done a rough um idea plan for that. Um, it's not necessarily as, I mean, if a project comes to its useful life end, then obviously it needs to be replaced by that time. Um, there are plans to look at possibly doing it sooner, but as a family, we've been fairly conservative and trying to make sure that we take this step by step. And it's a pretty big financial commitment to go forward with this project. And so we wanted to get this one approved, move for that, and then look specifically at phase two and the timing of that. The building is older. We would like to replace it sooner rather than later. But we had an engineer take a look at the building um about three or four weeks ago um to give us an idea of remaining useful life on there. And that was his estimate that he came up with. Um. But certainly, it the thought and the discussion has been had about doing it sooner. But we'd like to take phase one and get that done first and then look at the timing of phase two.
Okay, that's helpful. Um, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I actually just wanted to put a little plug in for biking in the area just because I lived in that area from 2010 to 2017. And I am a very lazy person, and yet I spent most of my time biking to get groceries, to go to places downtown. Um, I actually lived on Third North, right across from Smith's, and saw people walking to all over south of campus from that area, from that Smith's. And this apartment is only four blocks away from it. So the idea that people aren't going to take the time to bike or walk to Smith's and campus, and then I even would bike to campus from Third North, taking 100 West and going down Eighth, which has bike lanes and is actually, it feels okay to drive on these days after the addition of those lanes. So I don't think this idea that people in this area are going to increase their use of the public transit, of the biking, of the close proximity of a lot of the things college people like to do. Like, it's super easy to just bike down first and go to Center Street where you have Heart and Soul right there. You have all the food right there. You have the ax throwing place on University. Like, a lot of the activities are very accessible. So if there was a place to be um thinking, you know, maybe we can push people to use more of these public options, I think that this is definitely a viable spot for that.
I do as well. And I think the scooter program is also something that could tie into this, not necessarily for groceries, but I see people ride those up to campus. Of course, they can't ride them on campus, but I see a lot of them around campus um as I drive past. Um, so I'd I'd be inclined to approve it. Um. I would like to see more commercial. Um, more small commercial, more encouragement of that um in this area because I think that this is a perfect location for it. And so I'd I'd love to see a developer take that first step because I think it would start a cascade. Um, just because it's an you know, it's not the kind of place that would probably support big restaurants, but like ice cream shops and some of the other things that we see over south of campus around um 800 East, you know, the those kinds of areas. I I just see that this could be um that. And I'd love to see somebody take that first step to start the trend. Commissioner Jones again.
I got so impassioned about bicycles. I forgot the other thing I wanted to mention is that if we have this zone for mixed use, like if we're not leaning on it, I don't think it's going to happen just because it doesn't like developers aren't really encouraged to provide those kinds of mixed-use amenities because it's a little bit more work to like find people to live there and kind of facilitate that, which I love the ideas of more mixed use, especially in this area where we do have such a high volume of people coming and going, and it is on that main artery. So maybe that's something that we could discuss in a future work session or something of how if we want this area to be mixed use, which I personally am totally on board with, maybe we should have that discussion and have that be an ongoing part of the conversation. So when we have developers come in, we can have that not be like a surprise.
Thank you. Other comments? Are we ready for a motion? I see a lot of hesitation, but no um movement. It's kind of like one of those church meetings, you know?
Uh, maybe I'll just I'll make the motion to get the ball rolling. Um, this is item number four, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so um I move to approve item number four, Ten Metler requests concept plan approval for a 62-unit apartment complex in a proposed campus mixed-use zone located from 46 West to 90 West, 800 North.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I can second that.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Do we want to discuss the motion? Commissioner Henry?
I just had a a thought that uh the zone he's applied under does not require uh commercial as much as we want it. It's not required. And I think as a city, we need to look at that. Uh, but to hold him to that today isn't I don't think that's right. Uh, he's developed under the information he had, so that's just a thought I wanted to share.
Yes. I agree. And I think it's one reason why I'm thinking we maybe bringing phase two a little bit forward in time and and thinking about that as an option for that area. I can think of some small businesses that would work great in that kind of a neighborhood. Um, so other comments from commissioners? All right, I'm Commissioner Anderson?
You know, I think there's a lot to be said for the hesitance. We're talking about a building that will outlive all of us and you know, probably our kids. Uh, it's a big decision and um I don't think a project should ever go before a public body and get a positive recommendation unless people are really excited about it. That's it.
Commissioner Jones?
I guess my question just becomes what would we like to do? Just because I don't think we're at a place where sitting here thinking about it for five to 10 more minutes is going to bring us to a conclusion. So we can approve it, we can deny it, or we could also continue it. Um, and I just am wondering what of what we would like to do.
That is a good question. I would be um opposed to continuing it another time. Um, I think that that keeps the applicant um on the hook um in a way that is somewhat unfair. Uh, but if there's an alternative motion, we can we can have that. Commissioner Jensen?
I think I'm hung up on um what Mr. Henry tried to articulate or did articulate. It's that I'm not sure whose problem it is. If an applicant makes a a request that fits the requirements, then it's not fair for us to deny it. But I also feel like perhaps he was led to this. Maybe he would have asked for something else and would have complied with other standards if he wasn't advised. This was the best way to get the highest density for the least amount of sacrifice. And so whose responsibility is that? You know, who are are we allowed to deny it because somebody was advised poorly or because maybe their advisement doesn't match what we would advise? Um, and it's been so much time in there. I just I really feel like the thing that's keeping me hesitating is that it doesn't feel like it meets the intent of a zone change to just tag another property on there. And um I don't think it meets the original intent of the CMU zone, even though it's allowed in the requirements. And I don't know, like you say, I don't think it's fair to Mr. Mettler to continue it or to deny it for that reason. But I also don't think it's fair to the city to push it forward just because there was a loophole. So I'm with Mr. Anderson. I don't I I am with Ms. Akayaga. I don't I don't want to continue it, but I also don't want to push it through just because we are undecided. So maybe we should just vote.
Commissioner Henry?
Seems like the 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 hesitancy is all in the zone change. Uh, and I feel like for me, without that, that wouldn't be an issue. So I guess if I can make a question of staff at this point, or is are we too late for that? Since a motion's been made?
I think you can ask staff.
Okay, Mr. Ardmore, I I'd like to know more about why other zones weren't considered. Uh, and you know, the the MDR, why why did MDR not work? Why did other zone, yeah, just why were other zones not a good fit? Are we fitting the zone to the building or the building to the zone?
Sure. Um, so all the other zones, uh, I don't have access to my spreadsheet at this time, but all the other zones had uh regulations that didn't fit what the applicant wanted. So the applicant has requested the CMU zone.
Okay.
Okay. Are we ready to move to vote? I think I will just go ahead and call the roll. We do have a motion on the table. Um, Commissioner Anderson?
Nay.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Nay.
Commissioner Henry?
Nay.
Commissioner Jensen?
Nay.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
And I would also vote aye. So that gives us four against um three, four. Um, the question then is the motion does not carry what happens at this point, because I don't think we've had this occur in my time with the Planning Commission. Do we need to have another motion?
Yes.
Okay.
There has to be a new motion because there has to be a decision on on this.
We have to have a positive decision on a particular motion. All right.
I'm not sure what you mean by that. There needs to be a motion and a vote on the zone change application, if that's what you're asking.
Oh, okay. So we can, with this, we can say that item number four is complete?
Item number four is denied four to three, and then the rezone item needs a motion.
Okay. All right, so item number five, do we have a motion? Or more discussion?
I can make a motion on that.
Okay.
Based on our discussion and our vote, I think I safely would like to motion that we recommend that the city council deny item number five, the request for a zone change from the residential conservation zone to the campus mixed-use zone located from 46 West to 90 West, 800 North to allow for a 62-unit apartment complex in the North Park neighborhood. Do you need reasons for that in the motion, or do we just say that afterwards?
I think we've got the reasons written already.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Um, discussion? All right, I will call the roll again. Um, Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Nay.
And I also vote nay. Um, the motion does carry five to two. All right, um, moving to item number six.
I have a question on that, Lori. Or for staff. So does it still go to the city council, even though we recommend denial?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, um, item number six um is consideration of an amendment to Title 15 regarding the process and requirements for appeals related to impact fees with city right impact. Um. This is a recommendation to the municipal council, and it says that we're considering, are we I'm just, the way the item is worded, um, are we to recommend a final approval or that they think about it?
No, it's the same. No, it's the same. So you'll recommend approval or denial on this.
Okay. Um, all right, and Mr. Ardmore has the staff report.
Yeah, uh, actually, you just had a memo on this one. Uh, planning staff didn't have a lot to say on this. It came from Provo City Legal. And uh, we do have Dixon Holmes on the call if you have questions about the the amendments in this request.
Okay. Um, questions for staff? My understanding is that this um basically plugs a hole in the ordinance that um we did not have um properly defined, I guess. Um, Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah, I guess that's my question for uh Mr. Holmes. Uh, have people approached the city about appealing impact fees? Um, and that was the impetus for this, or is it just being proactive?
It it's both. We did have somebody appeal. And we went through the process. Um the outcome on that actually was a hearing examiner actually ruled against the city. Uh, and one of the things that we recognized is that we didn't really have criteria listed and and going to the memo that was prepared uh by Aaron and uh the actual language. And I'm just going to go there really quickly for the uh planning commissioners' uh benefit. Starting on line uh one forty-five. We introduce some standards for which someone can make an appeal or the basis of which we would consider an appeal uh to the impact fee. And and the process or the ability to uh appeal an impact fee has has been with the city since we've had impact fees. So this isn't new, but there was just some things. And I also tell you, for example, it's quite common uh on the traffic impact fee that we use national standards, and if someone uh employs or hires a uh a a traffic engineer who is uh again competent in their in their trade to do a more in-depth study, they can demonstrate uh how much of an impact it will be. And typically, the impact fee for transportation or traffic is generally reduced based on a traffic study showing what the true impact will be rather than using a national standard which has broad application but not specific to Provo City. Uh, there've also been some modifications uh on impact fees based on what a developer will do for off-site improvements that are part of an adopted capital improvement plan. And because the developer are putting in those off-site sewer or water improvements, we're not charging them for an impact fee and requiring them to also make those improvements. So we then modify. Uh, tho- those really aren't appeals per se, but more of a negotiation with the city. But if someone truly wants to uh appeal an impact uh impact fee, they feel it's unfair, or it's it's uh it's it's not commensurate to the impact that they're making, then we're just saying that that here's a here's a criteria for which we would consider those. And most of those, as you can see, require them to hire typically an engineer or somebody competent to the impact fee who can come in, present their case. And in in no situation are they ever barred from it. They just don't agree with our position. They they can always go to a court of uh of competence and and jurisdiction to to make their appeal. But if they want to uh exercise or exhaust the administrative process, we're just outlining a few more details on it. That's the basis of of most of the changes here.
I appreciate that. Thanks.
You bet.
Commissioner Jensen?
I had a question about this, mostly just because we don't ever see the side where the impact fees are imposed. And as I was reading through the language, I was wondering if you could just maybe use this as an educational opportunity for those of us who don't see that side. What types of developments um get parks or transportation impact fees? Are they only commercial developments? Are they residential? Is it a certain size? When do when do impact fees get implemented?
Aaron, do you want to answer that, or do you want me to?
Uh, either way.
Go ahead, and I'll I'll just fill in if there's any need to do so. You'll probably get it right. So just
Okay, so so there are there are impact fees for both types. Uh, they are, they differ uh in in value. Um, as do the type of residential use. Uh, with a lot of impact fees are differentiated from single family and multifamily. There's different uh base fees for those impact fees. Any to Dixon?
No, that that, yeah, so so on a commercial project, we don't charge a park impact fee. Uh, otherwise, everything else is applied. Uh, again, just you know, it it's whether it's commercial or residential, there's a water, a sewer impact fee. Um, but parks is the only one that is not applied to a commercial project, residential only.
So they get they get assessed at the final plan approval or um a subdivision or anything, anything that makes it a final?
Building permit plan submitted.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? All right, um, there's no separate applicant, so I guess we would move to the public hearing phase of this. Is there anyone on the line?
I don't have anyone on right now, but let's give it that thirty seconds.
Okay.
Okay, no public comment at this time.
Thank you. Um, the public comment portion is closed. Um, do we have any discussion before a motion? Commissioner Henry?
I just had one question. I noticed some of the language changes, the approving entity from the mayor to the uh uh development director. Can you just walk us through why that change was made?
Oh, this was to kind of keep the mayor at arm's distance from people coming in and asking of favors or politicking the mayor. And it keeps it with, again, so the process is is kind of a two-step process. And this part hasn't changed a whole lot. Is the first appeal is to the the actual department of which the impact fee is charged, whether it be parks, water, sewer. Uh, and then if they, if the director does not make a modification, then it goes to a committee rather than to the mayor. And that committee is made up of the chief administrative officer and a another department director who is not the director for which the appeal was made. And then I believe there's one one other person uh on that committee, and I don't have that in front of me, so I'm looking for that. But it just, it takes it so it's not as political um to be lobbied by the mayor. Uh, it just keeps it at a staff level. And again, if someone is either feels like it's it's not a fair impact fee at any point in time, uh, they're they're welcome and or able to appeal through a a court of law.
And can you give us an example of why someone would appeal an impact fee?
Because they're expensive.
Well, sure.
Yeah, and 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 they may feel that um that it it's 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 either applied unfairly or their their impact is is much less, and they're therefore uh they don't feel it's justified. And again, these impact fees are not just something blowing in the wind that we actually have a study. We do those studies about every five years um to make sure that we're keeping up and that the that the that the fees are paid by the impacts that are being made by specific developments. And there there's a lot of thought and process that goes into that. It's also a public process that someone can come to a hearing, and these are being considered by the council with the commensurate uh um specialist or consultants that we use. We use in-house, and we also use consultants that'll come in and and review these. It's a pretty vigorous process. It's also established by state law. We also have to spend the money within a certain time frame. And on occasion, there's someone may feel that they either don't want to pay or they don't feel it's justified, and they can then appeal.
Yeah, I was curious, as I thought about it, is it like a fifty-five-plus community not wanting to pay a school impact fee or?
Yeah, so so interestingly enough, we don't actually charge a school impact fee. The 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 school impact fee is really the property tax. That's the
Okay.
Uh, and in in Provo and most jurisdictions, uh, about sixty-five percent of the property tax goes to the school district. The city gets about twenty-two percent of that. The county gets eight or nine percent of that. Um, so that's that's what funds most school development is is property tax.
Okay. Well, that that makes sense. And I I'd read up a little bit on impact fees in preparation for this. I was surprised to learn that it was because people didn't want raised property taxes that they came up with impact fees to keep property taxes low while still being able to fund the city, so.
So, yeah, so part of the theory or the rationale behind an impact fee is that if you've been in the community a long time and there's new growth and development, it's the new growth and development that pays for that growth and not people who have been here forever, because assumably, they had paid something, either their taxes or otherwise, and rather than do it twice, so it's really to new development that pays for those.
Right. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Sure.
Additional comments or questions? Are we ready to make a motion? Commissioner Anderson?
Ready to make a motion, Madam Chair?
Thank you.
Item number six. I move that we recommend that the city council approve the amendments to Title fifteen regarding the process and requirements for appeals related to impact fees.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
That was Commissioner Henry? Any discussion on the motion? All right, um, I will call roll one more time. Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Um, Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. So um item number six carries unanimously. Um, do we have any other issues um to discuss this evening that commissioners want to bring up? Um, I do think we should do introductions at our next work meeting. Um, then put that on. I don't know if we are going to have a work meeting in two weeks. But um do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Um, see you in a couple
Thank you all.
Thanks.